First item on our business this evening is miscellaneous business, which is approval of the minutes for June 18th, 2015. Have you all had a chance to read the minutes?
I did. I want to compliment you. Incredible job of minutes.
Thank you.
Very lengthy, very detailed.
Thank you.
Very thorough.
I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes as submitted.
Right.
Okay. The minutes have been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those opposed? And those who are in favor, say by the same eye. Those opposed? We have a letter from the Fire Department regarding this case. First thing I'll do is, this continued hearing of case number 15.07 of 164 Boxer Road, Mr. Bontos appealing this building inspection, building inspector's decision, and seeking a special permit. So we have a letter from the Fire Department, and it is as follows. August 4th, 2015, Raleigh's only Board of Appeals, 39 Central Street, Raleigh, Mass., regarding ZBA application 15-07. Dear members of the Board, On Monday, August 3rd, 2015, I conducted a site visit of 164 Boxer Road and met with the owner of the property, the Mr. Michael Bontos. During the site visit, we reviewed the questions I made in my letter to the Board on April 4th, 2015. During my visit there was approximately 135 to 150 cars parked in the site, and they were beginning to mow in the area. The surface of the site appeared to be recycled asphalt. Most areas did have grass cover, although most surfaces were, surface area was visible. The fence line was visible in spots, but not completely. Mr. Bontos did say that the clearing of brush around the fence line was part of the mowing operation. The cars that were there on the property were parked in orderly rows, as one would expect to see in a large parking lot at a shopping center. In one area, there were vehicles with weeds growing around them with their hoods up. Mr. Bontos explained to me that they had had bees' nests in them, and that they were in the process of removing them. I explained to him that the way the weeds were around these vehicles is what I do now want to see. He stated that this will be taken care of. Mr. Bontos answers to my questions如下. Maximal amount of cars in area. While he did not answer with a specific amount according to his, according to his map, I estimate the maximum that could be allowed is 276 cars in two separate locations. I would suggest that consideration be made to not allow more than 250 cars at any given time. As mentioned above, the cars are parked in an orderly manner with clear paths between each row of cars. I find no issue with the parking scheme. What type of spill containment plan is in place? Mr. Bontos stated that he will have absorbent pads, speedy dry, and looms with containment valve in place. I would suggest that he be directed to have a written policy located in the area where the containment supplies will be located. In this policy, the number of the Fire Department, along with instructions on what to do to contain any spill. Due to the distance between the two parking areas, I would recommend two separate caches of spill containment materials that are clearly marked indicating on what they are for. Plans to permit, to prevent the chance of a natural fire, cover fire. A regular mowing program and clearing the inside of the current fence line will reduce the chance of fire occurring within the yard by the vehicles. After careful review of the parking scheme, I would also recommend that there be no vehicle parking against the fence. This would reduce chances of a fire from outside the property igniting cars that are parked in the area. While Mr. Bontos has provided the Fire Department with a key to the gate for our use to enter the property in the event of emergency, I would suggest a Knox box on the gate for the key so that it will be secure and will allow all apparatus in the department access to the gate. With the current plan, the key is, is in Engine 1. If Engine 1 is unavailable for an incident in 164 Boxer Road, we will have to breach the lock on the gate. How many staff will be on premises to monitor conditions? Mr. Bontos stated that he would monitor the site. How will the vehicles be moved to and from the site? Mr. Bontos stated that 95 percent of the vehicles will be driven off of the site. During my visit, three cars were driven onto the site for parking. In conclusion, Mr. Bontos has addressed my questions, and as long as the following points are made clear to him, I see no fire-related problems in the use of the property. One, no more than 250 vehicles stored on the property at any given time with no parking along the fence line. Two, a regular mowing program is done to keep brush and weeds from growing into the parking area and fence line. Three, two distinct caches of spill containment supplies so that any spill may be quickly contained. Four, a Knox box, key security box is located on the gate so that all department vehicles will have access to the gate key, which is not the case now. Once these points are implemented, all concerns of the Fire Department will have been met. If the Board has any other questions pertaining to the department's position, please do not hesitate to call. Jan Zbrotz, Fire Chief.
Okay. Where do we stand?
My client has gone to the neighbors and talked with them, by and large, and has got a statement signed by three quarters, seven eighths of the neighbors, saying, agreeing with the work that he's been doing and the care he's been showing to the neighborhood. And I submit that for your review.
This is dated July 1st, 2015. For whom it may concern, the undersigned have been informed that Raleigh Auto Parts Incorporated is storing cars, new and used, at 164 Boxer Road, and do not object to that use of the property. We understand that this letter will be submitted to the Raleigh Board of Appeals in support of its petition to permit Raleigh Auto Parts to continue its present operations. And, um, I'd like to see how many of these parties of interest. Do you have a list of parties of interest? Yep. Okay. Let's see here. Okay. Happy Lane.
Happy Lane.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, yep. Anderson.
I can't read this section, but it's twenty-six. Yeah. Okay.
Boxer Road. Two-hundred?
Two-hundred, yep.
Four-seven?
Two-o-seven, yep.
One-thirty-nine?
One-sixty-one, yep.
One-seventy-seven?
Yep.
Thirty and a half, Elaine.
Yep.
Two-sixteen? A little bit higher.
Okay. One-ninety-three, Boxer Road.
One-seventy-seven, one-ninety-seven.
What number, Boxer?
One-ninety-three.
Yeah.
There it is.
Yep.
And what was the other before that? Two-sixteen.
Two-chen.
That's going to be too far.
No, two-sixteen.
Okay.
One-eighty-one, you got?
Yeah, one-ninety.
I said one-ninety-three.
One-eighty-one.
I saw that.
Yeah.
Okay.
One-forty-nine?
One-seventy-nine.
One-seventy-nine, yeah. I saw it right here.
Okay. One-fifty-seven?
Fifty-seven. One-eighteen.
Yep.
Nineteen, Homestead Lane.
Homestead Lane.
It's on the first page.
Nineteen, yeah.
The Happy Lane, thirty-one.
You say seventy-one?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one.
The Happy Lane.
Twenty-two, twenty-six.
It's updated. There were parties of interest.
One-eighty-five, movie road. About one-seventy-nine?
Yes, Mr. Happy.
Yeah.
Yeah, his house, he was at home. That's where he was.
Yep.
One-ninety-seven, Boxer Road.
One-ninety-seven.
One-ninety-seven, one-ninety-two.
Yep.
Okay. Got this. But pretty much all of these butters.
Good.
That's good.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Got anything else you want to talk about?
I could go on all night if you like, but really, I'm urging you to, we want the appeal to be, we want to win. Please.
So you don't want, so you don't want to talk tomorrow, right?
If you want me to talk, by all means, I will talk, but I think I've said it all. I'll answer any questions you have.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to give you the list.
Okay. You've gone over this, this discontinued, and so forth. And you've gone over the water protection district, so on, right?
I have, I have looked at a number of elements of this that I found to be more complex than we originally thought, that I ironed out as I looked at. I do have a couple of questions I think we should address about, about some of the Fire Chief's comments that we'll have to consider. My main concern as of our last meeting was the issue of whether or not there was in fact a grandfathered use here that was being expanded, and I was concerned about that. And Mr. Ross's supplied, which I don't have, but we have in the file, and Bob Cool has one, a copy of the letter that was drafted as a brief in the original application for this permit when Mr. Bontos came before the Board in eighty-seven by an attorney who outlined very accurately by pointing to case law about how the use that is at issue here, which is whether or not vehicles are being stored and whether or not you're storing or holding three, four, five, six, or ten. This is a letter I'm referring to from Jeff Cresser, attorney for underwriter salvage.
I don't have that.
You don't have, we used, I believe you supplied it to us at the last meeting.
I provided my own brief.
Yeah, well, you may have, but I think it's a document that came up. We found it in the file. I went into the file and found it, and I thought you supplied it as well. This was, well, let me tell you what it said.
I don't think I've seen it.
Okay. Well, it, it works, it works to your favor.
Okay.
Right. Right.
Okay. I know Jeff Cresser.
Okay. I want you to stress down. In which, and he was the attorney for underwriter salvage, and in this memorandum dated October 30, 1986. And I had had conversation with Bob about this, and he said, if you have this letter, we don't really have to discuss this issue regarding the storage, because he lays out very clearly that there's prior case law which demonstrates, based on the foregoing, it is the underwriter's position that under Massachusetts law, they are permitted as a matter of right to lease a portion of Raleigh's owner property and conduct their businesses described in the application materials on an ad hoc portion. The one concern voiced by the immediate butters, I'm not going to read the whole thing. It essentially shows that, as you pointed out, which I questioned, that a use, even if it is a larger than prior use, which is to say if there are forty chairs in here instead of ten chairs, there were still ten chairs being stored, and the storage of chairs is constituted as a use. So whether it's ten, or whether it's forty, or whether it's a hundred, it's still the same use. And in, and my view had been that an expansion was anything that changed the actual nature of the use, and this sustains that it doesn't. We'll cite this again. It was cited in the original eighty-six case, but it removes my concerns that we have an issue surrounding whether or not there's an expansion issue, number one. Number two, I also did some, the planning department in their memo to us highlighted a number of concerns that they voiced, and I tried to look pretty closely at some of them as well. Their first concern, as stated in their memo to us from 416, was that, one, I would note that ZBL Section 522 states a nonconforming use may not be changed under Section 521 to the following uses: filling stations, establishments for sale, rental, storage, service, or the repair of motor vehicles. Now, obviously, in that, in that particular section, they were honing in on the rental and storage or service portion of that particular comment. However, they go on to say might effectively prohibit a change from the original auto salvage use to the proposed auto sales, even if the use had not been discontinued. Well, you're not asking for auto sales. You're not going to be granted auto sales, so as far as I'm concerned, that doesn't apply. And it's, it's a concern that's just incorrectly stated. The second thing they stated relates to four, Section 410 2.2, in which they say, although the proposed use is not a permitted use of the underlying OD zoning district, that statement is based upon their prior statement, which implied that it was an auto sales use that you were looking for, which you're not. So in my mind, that nullifies their, their following, which is the applicant should be advised that the property is located in the floodplain district in accordance with ZBL 410 2.2. Any new use, I don't see a new use here anymore. Any new use permitted in the underlying zone, which also require a floodplain district special permit from the planning board. Well, when I look at what that request for that need actually is, that relates to something which is, which is referred to as new development activities. Anytime new development activities are done in a floodplain district, then yes, a floodplain district special permit from the planning board is required. The fact of the matter is, the definition of new development activities actually pertains to the design and, and building of a physical structure and, and the development of homes and the impact that they would have on it. So I don't find that that concern that there applies either, number two. Further, they state the property is located in Missalwater Supply Protection District, subject to requirements as ZBL 411. The ZBHA should ascertain the applicability of the site plan's special permit criteria. Also, the submitted map indicate that the site lies in a zone wellhead protection district. The posed use may be restricted according to state environmental protection protocol. Well, I went to the state environment protection protocols, and what the state and environment protection protocols really prohibit is the, they prohibit a bunch of things, but the element that they were probably looking at might apply here is the element of the existence of a junkyard or a storage yard. Well, that is clearly not what your use is here. It's not the use you're looking for. It may have been a use of some kind in the past, but it's not the use now. So I don't see that as an element of us looking at this and saying, oh, okay, you know, you're going to be storing junk vehicles there. You're not going to be storing junk vehicles there. So I don't, I don't, there's reasonable concerns that have been voiced, but I don't think they apply. Lastly, they state that according to the habitat and ecosystems map in the Raleigh master plan, the property is located in sensitive habitat area and an area designated as an estimated habitat for rare wildlife. Any proposing a project within an estimated habitat will need to undergo a project reviewed by the National Heritage Endangered Species Program. That may in fact be true, that as that's written there. I don't know what, number one, the definition of a project really is, and number two, the Raleigh master plan was never adopted by the town. It was a project that was developed by the town, it was paid for by the town, it's a beautiful document for the town, but it was never actually adopted at the town meeting. So as far as I'm concerned, not only do we, but no other board is bound by conclusions or directives that the master plan suggested the town follow, because the town, in its wisdom, has never decided to accept it as a guideline that we have to follow. So they're all very important issues, but the more I looked at the state, the state regulations regarding the protection of the site, the use that you had, the use that you're asking us to consider granting you, and the conditions that you expect to use it, I see conflicts going away. And I don't find, I don't find myself And I don't find, I don't find myself saying, oh, we've got a problem. Now, that doesn't mean that you are not, in my opinion, that you're, you're going to have to meet some conditions that we're going to put upon you to address some of the fire department's needs. And the CONCOM raised some, CONCOM also raised some points in the original application in their memo to us, which I think are relevant, and we should probably include a comment in the condition that you have to meet, which, which essentially addressed the issue of what happens if there is a problem over there? What happens if, you know, somebody's jockeying a car in and out of there, and somebody's not paying attention, and they hit each other, and there's a rupture of a fuel line? What kind of capability, what kind of protections, what kind of resources are available? Where are they? Who knows about them to protect against any significant impact against that? Those are the kinds of things that are not present, that I think, you know, in an effort to protect the area, we need to, we need to make sure you adhere to. So those are some of the kinds of conditions I have. Those are, those are my original, that was my original concern. I have, I do have a couple of questions about the fire department, though, that I think we have to consider. If I may.
You know, the- You have the floor. I'll call somebody else back, please.
Okay. The, the fire department, the chief Rodrick came over and talked to you, and he, he came up, I wasn't sure how he came up with two-hundred-and-seventy-six cars, and, and frankly, you know, there was some logic in it, but since he's not here to say, I don't know what it was. And I don't know if you were advised, or you had a chance to talk to anybody. But I went over to the site yesterday, and I visited the site, because I remember when we visited as a group, I just wanted to see what was actually there then, because it was in, within a couple of weeks. And my count, and I suspect this fluctuates, my count as of yesterday is that the rear parking section, where the bulk, bulk of the cars were, which are Toyotas, totaled just a hair under three-hundred cars. The, the front area of cars, which is a much smaller section, which, which didn't, didn't display, they weren't stored in the direct kind of row, it was more a compact group, had about fifty cars.
Can I get to that later?
Well, I, I, you know, there's an enormous amount of additional space.
Yeah, I know that. I asked him to mow the yard.
No, no, I understand.
That's why, that's why I think you go down back, you'll see an empty area.
You mean to the back, to the left?
Yeah, because they put all the cars up there, so we could mow the yard.
Oh, so, so you had moved them there, they mowed in the back, and they hadn't moved back?
No, because I get, if you, if you notice, there's two, there's two rows of stone, or stone-
Yes.
That we're going to lay in rows, the rows that guys come out and come in.
Okay, yeah, no, that's-
That's why, that's why with that, I said that the chief Rodrick was like that, you see the guys here, they're normally the road, then two rows, there's a rows, because his concern was how is he going to get in and out and stuff like that?
Yeah, right.
To get down back, and like, and there's like, in the diagram that I gave the chief when he walked down there, that, it's, you see that, you know, because his question was about the mowing, you know, like that, is which has been done, with some left over to do. I had to up there and finish it off, but, but nine percent of the yard had been mowed down or something like that.
Do you, do you, is it your, are you, are you saying then that vehicles will only, your expectation is vehicles will only be parked in that rear section?
No, no, sir.
No?
No, sir.
Okay, so you want the flexibility to put vehicles anywhere?
About another nine acres, that fenced-in area is a nine acre lot.
Okay. The entire fenced-in area?
Yes.
Okay, well-
Approximately nine acres.
Right, okay.
In the building, in the, the so-called park in the front, that's an acre of land, but no cars?
No, 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 that's fine.
On the fenced-in area, this is the shape of a seven, if you see the way it's-
Yes, yes, of course.
That's nine acres of land.
Okay, well, here, here's my, here's what I think we have to consider. The chief, for some reason, came up with this number of two-hundred-and-seventy-five, okay? You're suggesting that you'd like to have the capability to park throughout the nine acres?
Yeah.
The whole, I would estimate therefore that the capacity of the nine acres is probably closer to five-hundred.
I would say that, yes, yes.
Okay? The chief is saying a number nowhere near that. So I don't know how, I mean, I, I'm not trying to necessarily limit your capacity, but the, but the chief is suggesting a number that's far into the capacity, either because he doesn't feel he wants the capability to try to get trucks through two-hundred to get back to two-hundred in the back. I don't know.
And I explained to him, okay, when you go down there, you know how you go inside the yard you walked in at the beginning, right? There's an open area.
Yeah, I drove all the way back.
There's no gate there, okay? From the front, that, that gate, from here, let's say, the left side of the, of that opening, if you go straight down, all to the right, it's all open, okay? And, and then there's, there's rows, just go straight down back, and around the back of the property, they're not up against the fence to the front, they can actually circle around the whole yard.
I, I, I went actually, my course was to drive back to the, to the area right prior to where the back cars were parked, and I got out of my car, and I walked up and down the roads, because I wanted to make sure I was getting an accurate count of the rows. And, and your, each double row seemed to have close to fifty cars.
Well, I, 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 I'm, you know-
No, and that's, and it's not up to you. I, I, the dealer's putting them in there. The question I still have is, there's an enormous amount of capacity here that's great, far greater than, than what, you know, the applicant would like us to approve, and certainly what the fire chief is saying he thinks makes sense. So I don't know, you know, I don't know how, if we're going to go along with fire chief, I don't know how we're going to get to your number. And, and there's plenty of space there. I don't have a problem seeing the number, because the three-hundred is hard, it's hardly crowded.
Were there more cars down there, this week, than when you went down?
There were more cars in the back, yeah.
There were more cars than in the back?
Yeah, yeah, and the chief's, the chief's, the chief's description is exactly accurate. They're very neatly parked, you know, I mean, they're car dealers, they move cars, that's their, half their business is moving cars around. You know, so they're very neatly parked, ass end to ass end, so if they need to get a car, they just drive it out, they back them in, it makes a lot of sense. And there were clear rows down each set of two rows of cars, so that you could certainly get a fire truck down them. It wasn't like, ooh, you can barely do it without getting a scratch, you can easily drive a, a good-sized vehicle down there. So I don't have a problem with any of that, but anyhow, the one thing the chief said-
I mean, what he's saying there, too, is he's saying that you can put two-hundred-and-seventy-six cars in two separate lots, so if you add that up.
Then that's five-hundred-and-fifty.
His final comments say no more than two-hundred-and-fifty vehicles stored on the property at any given time.
But he says, I would suggest that.
No, no, exactly.
So, but, but he's saying, you know, the two-hundred-and-seventy-six each lot would be kind of fair, I would think.
Well, that would be full house to me. If you, you could probably put five-hundred total in there by, by lumping up, but that would fill, if you put another two-hundred in your front over what you got, you know, you'd be full house. Now, I can't, I, I'm assuming, you know, another related item that's, to me, just out of curiosity, that I want to know about is, it relates our decision, is your, your original, in the original ninety, what was it, eighty-seven decision, you supplied some leases to the board to demonstrate that there were lease arrangements between, between yourself and the, the insurance companies. You demonstrated to us that the principal form of income that the corporation makes is rental income. It's obviously not this other income. That's fine, and I'm not looking to those numbers. What I'm curious about is, what kind of leases do you have? Are they multi-year leases? Are they renewable annually? Are they, what, you know, you know, I'm curious to know what those are, you know? Have you gotten five-year, are they five-year leases? What kind of commitments you got?
Hard enough has a year lease, which is renewable every year.
Automatically, or just, no?
It's, it's their decision, okay? It's a mutual, okay? They said we renew it, we renew it, okay? Group one had a six-month lease, and they renewed it for another six months.
Okay.
Okay, it is, I don't have anything, is it a twenty-year lease?
These are short-term leases.
Yeah, basically.
It could be out of build, okay? In those leases, does it specify, like cars, they can-
No, it doesn't, it's just the area that they use.
Yeah, right.
The area they use. And, and you have to understand one thing, I believe in the safety and, and, you know, obviously the fire department, there will never be a place that's going to, you know, they'll be able to get down there, you know? I don't want cars all the way over there, and like I said, to the right, that's where the snow goes, you know, you know, you're going to put the snow some of this, okay? So like I said, if you go through that gate up inside the yard, if you just go straight down there, I know the cars don't pass that, then, you know, obviously, once you turn to the seven, then lanes go this way. Up, up front, their lanes go, their cars are parked this way, but there's lanes in between it, but there's a road here, they go all the way down there, especially that white road there, I mean, I mean, there's got to be a hundred feet, once you get past that open from straight, put it, line straight down to, to the fence over there, there's got to be at least a hundred feet there.
Yeah.
They get down there, there's, there's no problem. I don't want to, I don't want to have a problem, you know? I know their concerns and stuff like that, and, and like I said, the fire chief said to me, he says, you know, something, he said, I've only been here seventeen, I've been here sixteen years, I've never got a car down there, and he says, there's a gentleman here that's been on forces, like I said, you never got a car to your property.
They're all over there.
I, I, listen, I, I understand that, and I understand that concern, and I, but to limit the, you know, a certain amount, because it varies, you know?
Yeah, right, sure.
Because sometimes with the timing, they'll probably put more cars there.
Is it, is it, are, in the lease, that you do the plowing?
No, they do that.
They do the plowing?
Yep.
So they bring a vehicle in there and plow?
They bring a front-end loader, and they'll do it, or they have their own plows to do it.
All right, and they, they move vehicles around, plow, back, that's up to them?
Yeah, yeah, they do that. They open up the front, get outside the yard, and they, they plow everything.
Well, the only reason I think we have to look at these things is, essentially, what has occurred in my mind is, when the former Lessee, the auto salvage company, ended that relationship, all of the conditions, all of the circumstances, everything else that was, as Bob pointed out in our last hearing, was relevant to that tenant, ended, and that was really, I have a question maybe for both of you, that was not really the operating use that was grandfathered, it was the use that Mr. Batos had under his licenses prior to that, that was the originally grandfathered use, because that's what, that, they both, those uses existed before that leasing company was there, that was just a prior use, not the grandfathered use. So I, I don't have a problem with that, but we're also being asked to grant a, a new permit, which is allowing them to do something that they hadn't been otherwise doing, and if we're going to grant them the right to do that there, that's my only concern in looking at the varying conditions. I don't want to create a set of circumstances that either jeopardizes the property or jeopardizes, you know, what you're doing in some side of the future, so that at least the town has some sense that there are precautions being taken to protect it. Hey, you know, I've been here for, I don't know, twenty years, twenty-five years almost, yeah, I've never, you know, I had a car go through your place years ago, you know, never had an issue with it, it's, it's, I mean, you know, why do we have life insurance? You might need it, huh?
Because of the, 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 this is seventy-four, and this is the first time in a period.
Well, in fact, the, and in fact, I went back and I looked at the original complaint, and the original complaint really has nothing to do with any of this. The original complaint is purely based on the sense that there's activity in and out of the place outside the hours that are no longer applicable to your use of it. That's really what the original complaint stated. I mean, in a very, again, I would defer to people who are attorneys on the board, in a very technical sense, I, you, I, I think you could almost respond and say, that's, that's not even a, a valid complaint. I mean, part of it was aimed at the abandonment issue, but I don't see an abandonment issue Given the, given the board's prior view for the eighty-seven case, that was a thorough, that was a thorough vetting of what you were doing, how you were doing it, licensing that you had to do it, that was all there in place. And given the fact that the Jim Cresser's article says, use is whether you have one or whether you have a hundred, it's a use. Different uses, you know, selling cars, that's a different use, you know? If you were building cars, that's a different use. But if you were storing them there as part of the prior use, you're storing them there. Frankly, if anything, these are new cars. Those were old cars, those were junkers, those were much more risky in terms of hazardous impact than new cars. Accidents happen, anything can happen, we all know that, but I see it as a less, less detrimental use, frankly, with a new car as opposed to one. So, those are the, I, I still, you know, I, I just have an issue then, do we want, since we're granting a new permit and we can condition it, do we want to, do we want to sustain storage to any particular number, as, as the chief suggests we consider doing?
I'd like to give, Bob, as you live in, you-
Well, I think there's two issues that we've got, whether or not the board is going to vote grant or permit, to deny, or uphold the appeal, building this way. And then you have the conditions. In my experience, you can, you can say, okay, we're going to grant a permit and then discuss the conditions. Now, that would be up to the board as to whether you want to vote the conditions first and then grant it, or just say, yeah, well, we'll, we'll uphold the appeal, grant the permit, and then discuss the conditions. So I, I don't know what the tradition of this board is as far as how you, how you address that, or is what you-
Who's the liner?
What do you, I have to discuss your conditions before you vote yay or nay, or when you say no, we'll vote yay or nay, then we'll impose conditions and see what we, what we come up with. So I, I don't know the history of this board, it's, I don't know who, who, like they're having.
Well, usually we discuss the conditions and then vote them.
Well, we air them, I think, as, as we have, we try to address them, we try to focus on what, what conditions might be addressed, but typically, we'll conclude on the basis of review, whether we're going to approve or deny.
We, we generally grant the permit with conditions, that's the, that's the way we do it.
Right, but-
And we'll, we'll decide on the permit, and then, then we'll prepare the conditions for review and at, at signing, which would be the next hearing. We would go through all of them.
Two-step, right?
It's a two-step, yeah. We do not try to vet all the conditions out in, in one meeting.
Well, and that, that brings me to my concern about the number. What, what date did you go out there?
Yesterday.
Okay, so you were out there on August nineteenth, the fire chief was there on August third.
Right.
He says he saw a hundred-and-fifty cars and you saw three-hundred.
Three-fifty total.
Three-fifty, I mean, it's a huge difference.
Yeah, I, I don't understand-
It's going to fluctuate, I would think.
Well, you know, you, I mean, you know, you guys know Ira, we all drive down Route One, right? You know where the four-sixty-six is?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Right?
They change.
His lot across there, sometimes he can't fit enough cars in there, and other times it's like, wow, this is supposed to be poor, because it's empty. And it sometimes changes within thirty days, so I'm, you know, and they're a big volume operation, so I'm, I'm sure there are opportunities to acquire from the manufacturer at very attractive floor pan costs that, that cause that ballooning to occur. It's not just driven by sales. They would love to have it driven by sales.
Okay, so I'm just concerned about an area of expertise that's outside of mine, normally that within the purview of the fire chief. Fire chief says, I don't want more than two-hundred-and-fifty cars there.
Right.
I'd, I'd be reluctant to go against his, his, his expressed wishes unless it were clear that he'd made a mistake somehow, or he- I'd, I'd be reluctant to go against his, his, his expressed wishes unless it were clear that he'd made a mistake somehow or he, he did such a rough calculation that he was, he was off the, that he. I mean, I'm not, not sure how your numbers and his numbers. I mean, if you saw three fifty there at what you believed was comfortable for safety vehicles, emergency vehicles get around, and he's got it at a hundred less than that. I'm just wondering if there's a way to, you know, reconcile that somehow.
Let's see, he says two hundred and seventy-six cars in two separate locations, is he really paying?
Two separate lots.
Yeah, but that means, that means two seventy-five in two separate locations, not two seventy-five each.
Yeah, two.
Yeah.
No, no, two seventy-five each.
No.
Uh, that's how, I mean, that's what he was saying, and then he goes on to say.
Oh, I don't think so.
And you got two lots.
Two fifty, so five hundred total. I mean, I, I think you can go back to him.
No, because if you look at the second page, no more than two fifty on the property.
He, he even clarifies it there, though, up here, he says, yeah, two seventy-six in two separate locations. I would suggest that consideration be made to not allow more than two fifty cars at any given time. I, I, I read that as meaning total.
Two lots.
Please, it's not.
Well, you're taking a total, I'm saying even that is two lots.
Well, if he had said in each location.
Yeah, each location, so that's a two area.
He didn't say that.
That doesn't say in each location.
No, it doesn't.
Yes.
And his, and his summary comments doesn't say it either.
His summary says, no more than two hundred and fifty vehicles stored on the property at any given time.
Yeah, that's pretty clear.
With no parking along the fence line.
Yeah, I don't think he was, I don't think there's any way you can say he thought you could have five hundred there. Not, not in this letter.
No, I think he was being, I, I think he was, he may have felt he was being generous, because he only saw a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty.
Right.
And he was putting a hundred on top of it.
That's, that's what I would think, because you got a nine, nine acre lot, and if, I don't know if you were there once, right, Bob? I mean, there's a lot of room, a truck to go around, you have more room there than you have on our streets or even driveways.
I, I know, and I, I'm just saying.
He might have made a mistake. I mean, maybe we should, we can ask him, yeah, see what he really says here, because I mean, he could drive a, you know, the truck right around there, no problem.
My point, that's exactly my point.
So we could do anything.
I don't want to just say.
I see what you're saying, right.
Sorry, you're wrong, but I don't want to allow double what you wanted.
Exactly.
Without any reason except speculation.
Well, you got that letter, you have to address that, yeah, I agree.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. But I think you can discuss everything else with the convention, whatever way you go. You got to see the chief and see where he's come up with this and why. You know, like you say, Tom, it makes sense, you saw, he didn't see many cars yet.
And that's the only thing I can think of.
But even two hundred and fifty would look funny there with nine acres.
Well, that's why, because when we were there, back in May or so, you know, I, but when I read his letter, I said, ooh, that seems like a, a small number, and he's, I can't imagine, and since he didn't explain how he really got to his number, that's why I went over. I mean, I live on New Brick Road, so I just went over and said, let me see. And when I saw you had two fifty out back, with not even touching the front of the property, I said, what's, where's he gone?
I know, I, I didn't know he talked, and that, that question was never addressed to me. And he just asked me where the lanes were there and, and where they were, how they were in the diagram that I showed him. Yeah, he underestimated that, that number, obviously.
Well, I, I, I agree with Bob, I, you know, I'm hesitant to guesstimate here on this sub, on this particular point. On the other hand, I, you know, I don't, I don't have a lot of other debates around conditions here. I think we could put conditions together.
What's a timeframe? That it's going to be, they can go in and out of here, is there a timeframe on that?
Yeah, no, I think we could, I, I think we want to, I think we want to address the, one of the main elements of the original complaint was that there's a lot of traffic coming and going. I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering whether or not we shouldn't restrict, put some hours on there for those guys to work in, which are essentially normal business hours for them. As opposed to saying they can come there anytime they want. They, they have to be a little more organized, because the residents were concerned about vehicles coming and going.
Slow speed.
And, and, yeah, and, and frankly, when I was there, there was, same one the day we were there. There was a van, a guy drove in with a couple of guys, you know, what was it called, jockeys, that hopped in a car and drove a car out. And then the van left with another guy in it. There were two guys on site in the back, one was roving in a vehicle. He, he approached me and, and asked me to identify who I was, and I told him who I was when I was there, asked for you. He said, well, you just didn't happen to be there. I said, well, it doesn't need to be here, I said, I just want, wanted to make account, so that's why I was there. I mean, I was in and out of there, fifteen minutes of that kind of thing.
But they talked to the neighbors, or I sent a letter to the companies, and they, they said to me that they have the speeders gone down.
Yeah, no, I, and.
And I, and I just told them, like, I want to put a sign inside the truck as they exit out with the speed of this twenty-five miles, I'll respect the neighborhood, struggles and everything.
Yeah, I mean.
Just to remind.
I mean, I, I, you know, it's, that you don't have control of it, and, and your tenant has a little bit of control over it. I mean, certainly, you know, a letter from Mr. Ross to your tenant saying, listen, if you guys get, you know, caught speeding in this town, you're going to jeopardize the entire situation right here, because I'm going to get a cease and desist, and you know what's going to happen? It's going to go away. And I don't want to lose it, and you're going to lose this storage facility.
Don't matter, that letter went out, I didn't do it, another attorney did it, but it went to the tenants, didn't it?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Just so you know.
Well, I mean, after, after we're done here, when we end up with a decision, whatever it includes, if there are any elements that are subject to their control, you know, in, whatever month it is, whether it's August or September, here's, this is the current state of the art on what we're doing there. Now, you can give them a copy of the decision, or it's public. But I, I don't know if we, do we continue, subject to this? Do we act?
Well, I think, I think we need to, uh.
I mean, I almost think we have, you know.
Mr. Jim. If I might go back to something that maybe we're all assuming, but I, I would just assume beyond the record. As Tom alluded to earlier, and, and I believe virtually the same as he, that a quantitative expansion, a large quantitative expansion from parking originally when it was the, just the auto salvage of maybe ten cars to two hundred now, seemed kind of gut love to be an expansion that, that would not be allowable. And that was my feeling. However, it has been addressed by the appeals court. And in Blackstone versus Telstone, provided by Attorney Ross, the court said the character of the use does not change solely by reason of an increase in its volume. So, my gut there was wrong. You can increase multiple, and that doesn't change the use.
If he increased his area, okay, from the nine acres that has been there all along, if all of a sudden he decides that he wants to move the fence for another five acres, that's an expansion.
I think so.
That, that would be an expansion. It's the same way with, with any, any business.
Any building, sure.
Uh, you can't, you can't control the volume of business. You can sell one hot dog with fifty million hot dogs if you've got a building so big. But as soon as you expand that floor print, the floor print, you've expanded business, and that's an expansion. You've changed, changed the area in which you operate.
Right, and the other thing that the court pointed out was, one of the tests is whether the use, if it's expand, if it, even if the volume goes up, does that volume have a different kind of effect on the neighborhood, is one thing you look at. We don't have any evidence that there's a, a different kind of effect on the neighborhood. A couple of people said they thought there were cars speeding, but there's no, there's no empirical evidence that there was any substantial different kind of effect in the neighborhood. We have no evidence that there's any kind of effect on the neighborhood that's different. So, as, as for the underlying, not the conditions, but the underlying issue of, of the grant of the permit, I, I think the applicant is entitled to a permit.
So, I'm finished with your questions?
Nope, it's time. Oh, other than just clarification on vehicles, how, how we being specific, is it limited just to passenger vehicles? Or what do you think, like pickup trucks, SUVs, crossovers?
Yeah, no, I.
John Deere tractors?
Well, I, what's in there now is pickups and passenger cars.
But, but Lordy, how, how would, Lordy work that out?
I don't know, we can do whatever we want there. I mean, I, we can certainly restrict it within, within the context of being fair, both to the, your Lessee and, and to the residents. I mean, we certainly don't want, I don't want you to have the ability, if Prime decides they want to store, you know, eighteen-wheelers in there, to be able to be running eighteen-wheelers in and out of there.
Do a, do a half ton in the cut, that's all, because a lot of people have a half ton truck.
Yeah, we just, I mean, we could restrict it. I think it's a good point. I think we should restrict it to passenger cars and, and passenger vehicles. And we could even go as far to say, we could qualify, well, no, we got that, but it'd be good enough qualification. You could qualify by weight if you want, not to exceed, you know, five thousand pounds or something like that.
Some of these, some of these vehicles are very, I, I understand what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying? I, I mean, I know some are big.
I mean, I, I don't know if I was selling, that's the truth.
No, no, I, I don't, I don't know anything that Ira sells, that any of those guys sell that is, are only their biggest SUV.
Exactly.
And some of the heaviest four, four-by-fours.
Again, I don't, I'm not an expert on the weight and stuff like that, but it's going to be basically gasoline and gas.
Yeah, you know, most of them will get above, four or five thousand is a pretty heavy vehicle. You don't get much of them.
They don't, they don't, I don't know if they sell commercial vans, like they, you know.
Those are shells mostly, you know. Those big ones, those fifteen passenger ones.
Yeah, I don't even know if they do that, but I mean, that's still a passenger van, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
What else, Dave? I don't, uh, I don't have any more questions, I'm satisfied. Okay, so if you want to, uh, have a motion to, I'd rather do it, Tom.
No, because all we can do is have a motion to, to grant a, a permit that will allow for the use of, storage of vehicles. The only other term I wonder we should look at is, uh, used. Do we qualify the term used at all? Used can go back forty years, fifty years. Do we put years to them? Do we say that there's not a, vehicles not before nineteen fifty?
Oh.
Nineteen eighty?
You put nineteen fifty, actually.
You know, I mean, because the moment we say, because even in, in Mr. Ross's original application, he was smart to include used and new. All I see is new there, but used could be a car that you and I leased for a year and turned it in.
Exactly, yes, I'm sure this carries it, uh, a year, two years off, I don't know, I'm not checking.
I think, I think, I would have guessed that there were some Hondas that were, you know, good quality used cars, one, two, three years old. But the Toyotas look to me to be all new. I don't, I, I think he keeps all his trade-ins down in Topsfield or Danbury, wherever, whatever town he's in right there. Those all look like new stuff. But I mean, do we qualify that? Because that, that, I mean, it's, it's.
I mean, I'm sure they're not putting ten-year-old cars up there.
No, no, no.
They auction, they get rid of them, they don't even want them.
Exactly.
And that'd be a logistical nightmare, I gotta try to figure out.
No, I know, I know. It, 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 you know, it's, I, it's not something I want to enforce, but it, it, if there, if it changes, if Peter sells, if Mike sells something, sells this entity, who knows, you know? If, if, if Prime, who's a huge national corporation, Honda North is local, but, but Prime could interpret that document differently and not tell him, and start doing stuff, I don't know, I don't know. You know, their, their lawyers are as good as you, and they're going to say, they didn't say, they didn't really say. You know, I'm just, I'm just supposing, that's all.
Newer used, newer used vehicles.
That's, that's fine.
I think so.
All right.
I don't have an issue with that.
That's fine.
I drove up here tonight, and he walked across the street and looked at my car, and he says, you got a new car? And I says, no.
You've got a newer used car.
Right.
No. It's five years old. And he, he thought it was new. I bought it two years ago. It had twenty thousand miles on it when I bought it. Three years old.
God, well, my cars are, my cars are fifteen years old. They look brand new, but they're fifteen years old. I don't buy any cars. So I, I mean, I, so I, I guess I would make, where'd she go?
She's out, she's out, didn't make it.
I just talked too long, she says she's out of here.
She's kind of hoping that's all.
You can say newer used.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't. The point, the point is, is, uh, these dealers aren't going to be storing vehicles up there that they don't intend to sell. And in that case, you know, I doubt very much if any car up there is more than three or four years old.
You're right.
I, I would, I would, I mean, to restrict it, but I mean, just what you're doing.
You could do five years, say nothing over five years if you want to put something on.
Well, I wouldn't even restrict.
They wouldn't even have it.
We don't have to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
I think it's common sense.
Sooner or later it's just going to cover.
Common sense is gone today, that's the problem.
Well, I suppose we could, within some kind of language, not mentioning age, just that these have to be vehicles that are roadworthy, in other words, not junk, not salvage, vehicles that can be registered and, you know.
Meet state inspection codes and, and be registered?
Yeah, as long as it's understood that these are cars that will be driven, or can be driven legally on the road immediately, i.e. not junk, not salvage. Well, that way we avoid reference to age of vehicles, you know.
Yeah, no, no, I don't, I mean, I don't.
It's a nineteen sixty-five Caddy, it's in great shape, okay?
No, exactly. You're, you're not, I mean, we went to here because you're able to operate the way you are under the, the current conditions. So, I mean, I, what we're likely to do here, if the board decides this, is to grant the permit, but if we do that, we wouldn't draft it. We have the conditions for final review and signature till the September meeting. That's when the decision will be ultimately, you know, signed off on.
So we could make, we could make suggestions about tweaking it, is that?
Yeah, no, I would, I would be, the board would be open to any suggestions you would like the board to consider in preparing those conditions. That doesn't mean they'll be incorporated, you know, line of verse, but it means that we're not disposed to having you suggest this would be something you would find acceptable, you know. We, you know, we're also going to be, we're still going to look closely at what the fire chief said and ask him, well, how'd you get there?
Are you open to, to meeting with him, the fire chief, and see if you can reconcile? He clearly had a view.
He did.
He had something in mind that restricted it to something that seemed to be half of what you and Mr. Bontos think. It seemed to me that, I mean, I could try to do it, but maybe, you know, I don't know the chief, so maybe.
Oh, no, I know, I know.
Somebody could meet him.
I just think I'll just make a follow-up to him.
I would like to be there.
Where do you get two fifty from, if, on nine acres?
Yeah, no, we could be, I know.
That would sure make, if the chief would agree to a much bigger number, that would, means we don't have to override him. It means he agrees that his number was lost.
I think it's got to be a negotiated number. I think it's got to be a negotiated number between him and us.
And I understand.
Essentially.
Well, he must have a reason for why he thought.
I, right, that's, that's the only reason I went there, because it seemed too long.
Well, like I said, probably like what Tom said, it was only a few cars.
He didn't, I don't, again, I was with democracy, stuff like that. I don't, it's not a copass if he did. And I didn't know about this number or anything like that. Something like this more, this, this more than.
I mean, you had more than that when it was a junkyard.
More than people, it's always been up there. That's why I said I'd be strictly used. I want the safety, like I said, because roads are no, I understand that, and I agree with that. You know, I'm not going to bury that yard, cars, no one can get in it, so I don't want that to happen.
No.
I'm strict, I think 250 is a very low number.
Well, I agree, based upon my headcount. I, I, I think it, it's, it dramatically, frankly, underutilizes that property for this particular use.
Exactly.
And, and I don't think if we choose, after the chief reviews his thinking, to come up with a higher number, I, I think to be on the safe side, we don't want to create a case where, at some point, you try to jam 700 in there, because he says, Mike, I got a, I got a load of 150 I got to throw in there, I got nowhere else to put it. Put them? Creates a problem.
The roads have a weakness, I understand, like the chief. Like, I answered those questions. The chief wanted me to.
Yeah, no.
And I guess the roads, they're the same one, they, they put new cars up there, they have to give them, back the cars and drive them down the road and find them out. So I don't want to contest it, but to restrict it to a certain number, you know, it's very difficult to do that on how you see it.
All right, well, I think.
Why don't you and I go down and see?
The chief?
See the chief.
That's fine.
And talk to him.
That's fine.
Okay.
About the tour, Mr. Tom.
Yeah, that's fine.
Can't be through, but it's, it's all.
That's a meeting. Yeah, no, I think we should add, we need to add to the, don't we, we need to add to the motion that we are upholding the appeal, and in doing so, finding that it was not a, an event, a case of abandonment, which was alleged in the appeal.
Yes.
That, that there is currently no hard restriction on the, on the cars, and that we are prepared to grant a permit for the storage of new vehicles, subject to conditions to be drafted by the board prior to their final signature.
New and used vehicles?
New and used.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, allowing the appeal, not upholding the building inspector's decision, but allowing.
Right, allow, right, upholding the appeal, right, or allowing the appeal, yeah. And then before the next meeting, we'll meet with, we'll meet with the chief, and then, I mean, if you, if, is there any reason why the applicant couldn't be there?
Hold on, have you got that motion?
Mm.
Hold on.
You got the motion?
Yes.
Can you read it back?
No. As best you can.
Good to know. More time is spoken.
No.
Okay, you made the motion. Want to second it?
Yes, second.
You'll second the motion. All those in favor, I'd like to see it. All right, all right, okay. The next thing is, we will continue this.
September, you need to direct the clerk to draft the decision.
Okay. Would you notify me, tell me why we have to get this out?
Yeah, is there any reason why he can't be there? Is there any reason why, why Mike can't be in that meeting? No, right?
Not the chief.
No, sure, we'll notify, as soon as we can, we'll, I'll email it.
Because this is kind of, I got, my daughter going back to school, so just a couple of days' notice, so.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I, you know, his, I mean, I was amazed he got out to your office. I was amazed he got out to you, because he's an extremely busy guy.
Well, you know something? They, they thought, they want to know how it was done. I thought I was required to do that.
No, they filed originally.
I went to his office, and I said, I got this letter here, the, the, so, and exactly what he asked me, with those numbers, I answered them.
Yeah, no, when, when the application comes in, we notify all the relevant, relevant departments and boards, and they respond or they don't. And we got letters from Khan Com, planning, bar department, health department, and select.
I thought it was fun.
So, yeah, so you did. So we'll let you know. I have no idea when that's going to be. But it'll be soon, and then we'll communicate.
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
September 17th is next meeting.
One motion you draft there.
Yeah, you need to make a motion.
We made a motion to.
You made a motion to approve it, but you need a motion to directly, you write it.
Oh, just, hold on.
Yeah.
You don't need a motion.
Well, you should have.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. We didn't direct him either to that, though.
All right.
And I'd rather.
All right. Will you make a motion to have Tom draft the decision?
I don't know.
I make a motion, Tom, again, draft the decision, because he does a good job.
No, that's fine. I just said we need to have the action.
Okay.
Record it.
All right.
Phil, would you second that?
Bobby.
Oh, Bobby. Okay, Phil, second that. Any further discussion on whether he's going to do it or not? All in favor, all in favor, say a five, I say a nine.
Aye.
All right, okay. The next thing is, if we continue this till next month.
All right, yes.
September 17th, continue this till September 17th, and would you give us a letter?
Agreeing to the continuation.
Agreeing to the continuation.
Yes, and I think you're a good clerk. Will give me something to sign, which I'll do, and that'll do it, yes? I did it last time.
I know, but it, you know, doesn't matter. Look at you.
What do you want me to do?
Put the date.
Oh, you wanted to fill it out, okay, I will.
Yes, yeah.
I'll wait and charge him another hour. I knew I'd get a laugh out of you, Wallace.
All right, can I have anything else, Tom?
Page you're throwing, I'll make a motion.
Yep.
Okay, we can vote on it, continue the, watch out.
I know. We did.
Make a motion to continue the hearing until September 17th?
I'll second.
Yeah, okay. Motion's made, continue the session, September 17th. All those in favor, say a five, a nine.
Aye.
All right. Make a motion, we adjourn the meeting?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's made, adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.